Mr. Goody is in the building. Good evening. Today is November twenty first, twenty twenty two. I would like to call this meeting of the University Heights City Council to an end. This is Thomas Weeden, calling.
This is Beth here. This is Blackwell. This is Rock.
Here.
Mrs. White. Mr. Bill.
Here.
Tony.
Here.
And she came.
Here. Our motion to excuse Ms. Blackwell and Mrs. White. So, one second. This is Tom, uh, motion by Mr. Brock, by Mr. Goode. This is Thomas Weeden, calling.
This is Sacks. Aye. Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Bill.
Aye.
Mr. Tony.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye. Very motion. There he is. Please join me in the side of the legislative chairs. I invite all leaders to the power of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. First item is reading a disposal journal. We have seven minutes from September nine, twenty twenty two that were tabled, last meeting. Is there a motion? So, we're here. Motion, the minutes since September nine, twenty twenty two, by Mr. Goody. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rock. This is Thomas Weeden, calling.
It's Beth. Is there any discussion?
No. I mean, I'm sorry, were there any changes to the minutes?
No, we just had an opinion on that. So, I'd ask this before, I wasn't sure if there was discussion about our opinions.
Should there be discussion on? Motion to go. Well, there's things that are changes. I suppose there's changes.
Yes, it's not changed.
Sure. All right, go ahead, this is second.
Um, I just, something that I'm not sure the public knows, but these minutes are fifty-nine pages long. And it is, I first want to acknowledge Mrs. Thomas for, um, writing them up verbatim. Uh, it's quite a, quite a youngest draft. But, um, I'd like to say that it felt kind of unnecessary um, due to some unsubstantiated slander that has become a pattern uh, letters with residents, council, or state guests, that's unbecoming of our citizens' leadership as it contributes to a divisive environment. And I want to make, will clearly differentiate something that's an attack and something that's a healthy debate and disagreement from one of them. Because when we disagree, it should be on the merit of the issues, not on the merit of the people. So, thank you for letting me say my, my thoughts.
Thank you, Mrs. Sacks. As long as we are staying gone, Sarah, I think I would add requiring the Council to do a purban transcript of the minutes, which is supposed to be a summary of business that's conducted. It is, is a waste of city resources, so. Whomever here requested the transcript, I think that was an unfortunate decision, but we have a fifty-nine page set of minutes, which aren't truly minutes, it's what you say are a hereditary transcript of meetings. And thus, that is what we will see this week.
And I would like to.
This is Sacks, we can move on. Is there any further comments? This is Sacks.
Thank you. There will be verbatim requests when the words that are spoken attack people rather than discuss the issues in a healthy form. I know that I've asked for some portions to be written verbatim. And the reason is that people need to know what goes on in these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sacks. Would you care to elaborate as to which portions you requested verbatim?
None of this one. Oh, yes, that, um, you and it's not just this meeting, it's past meetings, when you have slandered people and slandered other people. And it is just not acceptable of illusion for the form in which, uh, what our residents are entitled to. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Sacks. Glad to know that slander, the alleged slander has been written down, so you do vote on it.
I don't understand your tone.
That's okay.
No, it's not okay. It's what you mean.
Oh, this is Thomas.
No, I think I know what it means.
Somebody want to call a question, a motion? Uh, there is a motion for her, cool. Very good. Okay, that's a call, question, this is Thomas. They've rolled this.
This is Sacks. Aye. Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Bill.
Aye.
Mr. Tony.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye. The motion carries. We have a set of, uh, minutes from November seventh, twenty twenty two as well, however, I think there was an error with drop boxes. Thomas, whenever you talk about this earlier, I don't think anybody actually got them. I would ask for a motion table, November seventh, that. Motion to table minutes. Motion to table this November seventh, twenty twenty two, is there a second? I'll sign it. Second by Mr. Goody, motion is made by Mr. King. Is there any discussion? Actually, on the motion table, there will be discussion. This is Thomas, we call it.
This is Beth. Aye. Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Bill.
Aye.
Mr. Tony.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye. Okay, items tabled. Uh, number four additions and amendments from the agenda in our first committee, I would ask for a motion table, item V. Uh, there's a companion item that should then, that should be considered with it that isn't here, so my suggestion would that feed that item G and a companion motion regarding the funding, um, be placed over the next agenda. Is there a motion table, item G?
This is for, for, for the, uh, the, the Washington, so it's a separate special.
Yes.
So, we move to the, uh, next council meeting.
Yes, yes, there is, there's a companion piece that, that, that should be considered with it where we accept where we accept funding that we applied for from any RSD, um, supplement funding was previously applied for and accepted by this council to pay for the additional uh, law bid, uh, aggressive and disagreeing with all their prices, um, through the end.
Is there any concern about, uh, the project moving forward, any timelines that may not be able to be met?
It isn't late, no.
It's not late, but, uh, move it to the next council meeting.
No, this is, it should not make a difference, I think we're looking at April, they have, they're spread out even more. It's not going to proceed like her, it's just. So, uh, so, okay, motion table, item G by Mr. Goody, is there a second? Sorry. Second by Mr. Goode. This is Thomas, we call it.
This is Sacks. Aye. Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Bill.
Aye.
Mr. Tony.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye. Very good, items tabled. Next is, are there any additions in the rules, uh, for this agenda? There are none, I'll move on to, uh, item five, comments from the audience, speakers are limited to five minutes. They got fifteen minutes for meeting additional time upon discretion. Is there anybody here, there is to address the city this evening? Seeing done, we will move on then to reports and communications from the mayor and take the action thereof. The in-person University Heights Civic Awards return to campus, John Carroll University. The event was a celebration of some of the people who are working hard to make our city an even greater place, good, work, and raise a talent. For the record, the award recipients included members of the Juneteenth Committee, eventsman Dr. Alicia Sloan, Bluelie Anderson, and Tom Verity. Stephen Orkheim was named Citizen of the Year. Judge Ann Walton Cowley was spelled the Servant of the Year. Kimberly Kirkhoff and Maggie Balsama were the Employees of the Year while June Drayton and Sergeant Mark Brogna were named Co-Orbit. Cuz as on the circle was recognized in honor of their thirtieth anniversary. Tina Reynolds is Education, or Educator, rather, of the Year. The following received Good Neighbor Awards, um, candidate Zachary Sneakco, Dr. Brianna Keyworth, Dr. Crystal Bruce, Elizabeth Pangolier, Jeffrey Earl, Dr. Lieutenant Kevin Bonhoss, Michelle Fowler, Rick Gruner, and Wendy and Robin Germsch. Thank you to all who attended and all who presented, we're already looking forward to next year's event. Thank you, the one eight eight Ohio Comp for donating seventy-five items gift cards for distribution to University Heights residents for the holiday season. This year, we notify residents, be ready, notify, and cards are playing within thirty minutes. Thank you to the two Paris City residents who wish to remain anonymous for donating an additional fifteen gift cards. That's ninety gift cards in the middle of this Thanksgiving season. Happy Thanksgiving, one and all. Looking ahead to December, it is the return of the annual sock drive. A fresh drive of warm socks is much desired and a much requested item this time of year at local shelters. We will accept donations of new socks at City Hall and other locations to be announced after Thanksgiving. Look for details at the meeting November twenty eighth and City Evening this next week, or bring your socks to the next city council meeting. Never miss a community event began. The University Heights Community Calendar powered by Yodle is up and running. Create a free account today, so you can pump the date on community events in and around University Heights. We've partnered with over thirty groups and organizations on the calendar. Sign up, go to universityhearts.com. Speaking of upcoming dates, there is a rescheduled joint meeting of governments, city government, Queens Heights, University Heights, the CHUH School Board, and Heights Library Board for Wednesday, November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, at six thirty P M in Heights High School Auditorium. We go tonight, I have the honor of addressing the Louisville Scout Scout troop six twenty at Jezu as part of their Building a Better World adventure. Part of my charge was to raise with them and discuss an important issue facing this community. I shared with them this. This might seem like a surprisingly obvious thing, a simple thing, one that everyone here can understand. We all need to treat each other better. We need to be understanding. We need to listen as much as we talk. We need to be respectful of each other and of our differences. It's okay to disagree. No one should hate anyone else over mere disagreement. Everyone is entitled to their own opinion. That said, I would quote Black American writer James Baldwin, who once said, "We can disagree and still love each other unless your disagreement is rooted in my oppression and denial of my humanity and right to exist." We don't have to agree with each other, but we do have to respect each other. We have to live and let live. Freedom and respect mean we do not oppress others. We do not tell someone that they have no place in our society. We must not discriminate against people based upon their race, their religion, their gender, their age. We must not prejudge people. We must eliminate our prejudices. And we have to actively seek to eliminate prejudice and treat people fairly and respectfully and ethically. And since we were meeting in the basement of Jezu, I asked the room whether they all knew the prayer of Saint Francis. And we went over it. Now, I wouldn't recite it here, not in public, being the office of mayor is not a religious office. And I do not lead public prayers. I have to be in there for people of all faiths and of no faith. Nevertheless, in this particular prayer are some truths that are greater. The universe will certainly be bigger than any one religious tradition. I think we could all benefit from remembering them as its design. To bring love, to bring hope, to bring joy. To be understood as to understand. It all starts where we live, with ourselves and our neighbors here in University Heights. It is something we must all do better together. And sometimes we will mess up, we will call someone a name, we will call someone our enemy. We may tell them that we hate them. We may like them with words or even with fists. When we mess up, we must resolve to do better. And then we must be better. And from there, the scouts had some great questions. Everything from questions about public safety to what is my favorite ice cream? Finally, on a somber note. For thirty-five years, the city of Cleveland had not lost a firefighter in the line of duty. And that changed over the weekend, a firefighter, Johnny Tetrick, a twenty-seven-year-career firefighter, was struck and killed on John at a collision scene on I ninety. Fire crews have reported to be collision scene. Seemingly, one workers tried to drive around neighborhood vehicles and hit John. The suspect hadn't taken into custody. Anytime a firefighter is lost in the line of duty, the brotherhood that our firefighters come together and mourn together the loss of their brother or sister. This one is, however, especially personal to me, as I first met Johnny Tetrick when we were both children. The Johnny Tetrick I remember most is the fellow six-year-old I played kickball with at recess, at off-the-burial interest point. I remember him, they was smiling first day. I don't want to pretend that we were close, when we weren't. He was a wrestler, I was in band. We didn't stay in regular contact, but I, I always knew we'd see him. And we always said hi when we saw each other. Being in the same class in high school, we occasionally run into each other now and then. It's been a while since I haven't seen him. But I knew he was Cleveland firefighter. Running into him one night a few years back, we had talked about his word and compared what we were both doing to serve. Each and every person in every profession has a life full of experiences with people they love and love them back. Johnny was no different, leaving behind a wife and three kids. Countless friends, Clevelanders, his lies he touched over his short fifty-one years on this earth. My condolences to them all. And let this be a reminder, we are on the road, operate with audios, to be safe and be smart. Is there any place we need to be so bad that we should try to maneuver around freeway accident scene with emergency fire hurt on every lawn? Firefighter Tetrick, like all men and women in our fire police departments, was prepared to put his life on the line to protect our allies. But harm should not come to anyone recklessly. We must all look out to reach him and deter block him. Governor DeWine ordered flags passed down around State of Ohio, for Johnny Tetrick. They will remain down until sundown the day it was interned. Thank you, this includes my report. Next on the agenda is reports and communications from the city council and taking action thereof. Are there any reports at this time? Seeing nothing, we will then move on to item eight, reading a disposition of ordinances, resolutions, motions, and consideration of agenda matters. Item A is an update from Law Director on House Bill five sixty-three and discussion of short-term rental regulations. So, if you can't get it for. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Councilwoman Blackwell asked if we could do a, a brief update on House Bill five sixty-three. It's a bill that was introduced in the Ohio House earlier this year that would preempt a local renovation of short-term rental units. Uh, the bill is fairly simple, it indicates that, uh, number one, this bill cannot enact any ordinance or a regulation that prohibits operation of short-term rental units uh, across the board. Uh, and secondly, um, further limits municipal regulations of short-term rentals to anything that is geared towards health and safety or the prohibition of certain, um, activities such as the sale of illicit drugs or, um, motion prostitution, those kinds of things. Uh, the status of the bills that has been asked by the House and is currently in the Senate Committee. Uh, if you had asked me at the end of the summer what happened with this legislation, I would predict that it would be, had been passed by now. Uh, I don't know whether it's being, um, taken up in the injunction um, and have not heard, um, what the legal passage is. Uh, I do think that, um, given the fact that it was less in the way, it would be appropriate for the House to be referred to the Building and Housing Committee uh, and the back committee to take up a discussion of what local regulations we might refer with respect to short-term rentals. Um, and certainly focus on the health and safety issues that we know, um, won't be impacted whether or not this legislation passes, we can discuss some other, um, items that we need to keep in mind with respect to, um, local regulations, um, include, if I want to back up, other, other ordinances in northeast Ohio communities include things like the Department of Registry, uh, registration of tenants. Uh, there's, uh, there are licensing requirements, there are ordinances that limit the number of days that you can use, um, a, a residential structure, full structure alone. Uh, so there are some, some precedents out there that, um, will be reviewed for consideration. Um, and based on that, I think, uh, council may want to have a committee meeting and, and draw our studies and get all something that would be appropriate for the city. And includes me. Thank you, Mr. Rock. It would be in order to ask for a motion for this, to the Building and Housing Committee that made it, this is by the thousandth time, which I hear is, so we want to make that motion that we could obtain. It would, it certainly would be appropriate, um, if you see, here, you know, this is for committee, uh, but I'll be prepared to present a building now around this topic on the other council meetings. Well, I mean, no motion is necessary if anybody wants to spend their time. May I have some motion? So, discussion, any big questions, Mr. Weeden? Thank you, Mr. Rock, appreciate your answer. Item B is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fifty-six, accepting opioid settlement funds, directing placement of such funds in separate funds. I'm trying to get a courtesy, this is on her reading, I don't know. Yes. Okay. Before you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Of the we are looking to establish a separate fund to, we mean, compliance with the terms of, so, agreement. We did receive a distribution of, uh, several months ago, that has to, you know, been held in general form to ten B. The body of the ordinance can be supervision that allows, like, establish a separate fund in a subsequent way, again, re-record revenue to that fund entitled by, uh, the state authority.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Is there, are there any questions, Mr. Kenny? Any discussions there? If, no, is there a, is there a? Is there a?
Yes, thank you, always good. Um, I, I know that we had, I referred this to the city committee at the end of September. Um, at the beginning of September, we reviewed some documents, so we had a conversation. Um, it was a good, uh, September meeting or the October meeting, uh, where we discussed some potential plans that the administration may have for, for programming. Overall, the conversation was that there weren't specific programs that the city had, or that we think we might have, other than perhaps a publication of another program um, that, uh, we would use the money for. Nonetheless, there were some additional documents that I had requested from the Law Director uh, in relation to the grant of funding, which emailed to me on October twenty-sixth. Um, our November city committee meeting was canceled to make way for, um, the we didn't say, I said, executive session, uh, and, and the, the police and fire chief, they called me at that time, it was nothing impressive for advantage, and so we made way for that. I'll bring this up again at the October meeting, the additional documents that perhaps we can have, excuse me, the December meeting. Uh, perhaps we could have a more detailed discussion on what, if anything, would do with the money, uh, should it come in? And also whether or not the proposed publication, um, and advertisement of the separate program is appropriate use of funds, given the restrictions that were outlined in the guidance from December twenty-sixth.
And, thank you, Mr. Goode. Um, Chief, Erko, you're here, and Chief, our reasons out today, Bill, they all know this. My understanding from our conversations is that, I mean, we're talking, I think, about, is it twenty-six hundred dollars a year?
That's, that's ballpark, yeah.
Yeah, that, that really what we were looking at with that sum, only just twenty-six hundred dollars a year, shoring up the programs we have as opposed to creating a new program that uses twenty-six hundred dollars annually. Would that be, would that be accurate? Do you keep my recollection of this version you got in the meeting?
Yeah, yes, what programs were you showing up? Yeah, I should, you could have corrected my recollection there. Other than the advertising, I didn't know the other programs.
Uh, my recollection is that we talked about some of the already established programs in the region and using, uh, the money to maybe create a publication to promote those already established.
Oh, yeah, that's what I meant by, by publication. When you say shoring up other, are, are, are the existing programs? By, by just a fortification or supplement or addition to the actual programs you're talking about, or just the advertising?
Yeah.
Okay. So, there was, now, there was a section in the, the, um, restrictions that talked about publication and advertising, but seemed to be limited to, and I don't have it in front of me, sorry, right now. Um, but it seemed to be limited in scope to what could be an advertisement. Um, Mr. McCall, did I ask you for an opinion on that already? Uh, then, I will, uh, I will do that after bringing this document back to the, the meeting in, in, uh, December. Uh, but I appreciate you sending it over, so you would.
Okay. Well, and it sounds as if we just here would be to table this item from this evening and bring it back at the first meeting in December, which would be the, the hour following here. Well, we will head and be here in safety, okay, to be. I'll make a mention, okay, so we have motion accordingly, Mr. Goode.
A second.
Second by Mrs. Sacks. This is Thomas, we call it.
Sacks, aye. Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Will.
Aye.
Mr. Tony.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye. Okay, items tabled for the next meeting. Item C, ordinance.
Item C, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash sixty-nine, establishing permanent appropriations for a year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and declaring an emergency on the second meeting. For the twenty twenty-three budget, city council and the finance committee chair in particular asked for three things. That the budget be opposed this fall or passage this year. And I did present the budget without request. Number two, the budget be balanced. And I presented a balanced budget. Number three, finally, and perhaps most controversially, that I, the administration made no proposal for expenditures for modernizing our methods, some ways pick up to defer that discussion until after the budget. And even though I disagreed with this, I respected it and I honored it and proposed those such expenditures at this time. I have met all three requests. In return, I simply would like my budget passed. There have been two finance committee meetings. There are no changes that need to be made to balance the budget. There are no further expenditures that the administration seeks. I attended the last finance committee meeting. It appeared there were some costs that might be proposed in order to buy some additional fire vehicles, including the ambulances. But this ambulance is not due for replacement until at least twenty twenty-four. After consulting with the fire chief, the administration is not seeking this additional fire care in the twenty twenty-three budget. According to, as this is second reading, I ask for a motion to adopt the ordinance and approve the budget. Is there a motion?
Mayor, uh, regarding the, uh, ambulance, we're it's my understanding that we have to appropriate it in twenty-three and we're going to get it, um, built and into our firehouse by twenty-four, so that's why it's
Well, that is what the administration would require.
So if it's not in the twenty-three budget, you won't have it in twenty-four.
Right, we would be seeking to put it in the twenty-four.
To have in twenty-five.
To have when it's ready.
All right.
Is there a motion to adopt? So moved. On a motion by Mr. Kane, is there a second? Well, I'll be waiting a second, is there any discussion on this agenda?
Mr. Kane. Yeah, Mayor, um. My understanding came out of the, uh, most recent finance meeting, there were, uh, some adjustments made, uh, or to allocate funds towards ambulance. Should that be correct way to put it?
I guess, right, ambulance, I'll be clear, but, uh, for thirty seconds, so we'll have a little bit of that.
So I, um, it seems that the and Mrs. Weiss was not in attendance in the last finance page, not in attendance here. Uh, I think I would prefer to perhaps table the, uh, this particular, uh, issue uh, till hour four, uh, she turns this, we can finalize it since we basically so we're ninety-five percent there. I think it would be appropriate to make sure everybody, uh, is present on board. And it's just, so it's minor details that we resolve personally. Well, I had where we were last year, obviously, we are still budget. Um, my understanding is nothing will be impacted, uh, to perhaps table until the next council meeting for these issues, for these violations to be resolved. And we can move forward, going to the end of the year, for that really budget, as is expected.
Okay, is that a motion to table, Mr. Kane?
It would take precedence to the motion that is currently on second. I would make a motion to table, uh, this agenda item.
Okay, next time. We have a motion to table this agenda, and then, is there a second, Mr. Kane, is there a second?
I don't know, we hasn't really tabled it, it's just on second reading, we're not here to pass it today. In fact, the finance committee does not need a motion to send this to council, so it's a little premature. Even have a, on the agenda, just point, it's nice that it's here, it's part of the public domain, part of the public record, everybody can review it, but the finance committee not make a motion. Yes, we would not really go past. But then, um, what we need and there's going to be a meeting on December the eighth to go over the two dozen or so flag items, so we get confirmation. And I do know, Mr. Kennedy, you know, those items, or I haven't had a chance to do that yet, so I will put my thoughts this week and add it to your email format so that, um, we can have those answers for the December meeting. So I do.
So you're on second meeting, um, and I, I think you should do one of three things, you should pass it, or reject it, or table it. You are on second meeting.
I don't want to give the impression that if, by concern if they were to either accept the budget, that there are some open items that need to resolve, if were to not pass, that gives an indication that it's unfavorable, which it is not. Uh, that's why I think tabling may be the most appropriate at this time.
Well, we do have a motion to table, and we have a law directors guidance here that we're either talking about passing, rejecting, or table. They're two outstanding motions, neither of which has a second, but the motion table takes precedence as a matter of priority. So I would see that a second for the motion to table, just to clarify, it was not until after the, this is for the meeting.
The next finance is summary, just, yeah, which is after the next council. And the next council meeting will be the banking, that would be correct.
Sounds good. Double check. Is there any comments here? Is this motion table under December nineteenth, you?
My information will be tabled and, and to the, after the finance meeting, around December eighth, to be brought back to the, uh, the agenda for December nineteenth, council. My praise my brother.
I think so. Um,
I, I will second a motion that includes upon, um, a motion by the finance committee to bring to council. The finance has a vote of the budget to bring to council.
Yeah, maybe that would really be, yeah, that would, I agree, but it's already here, yeah, I mean, the the finance committee, yeah, so it's been, it seems like, um.
Well, what I'm saying is, if it requires a third meeting, it's possible, um, it won't be ready to pass it at the summer, uh, or the December meeting.
Well, so it, it, it makes sense to have the committee crew, like, to send to council
and then we can, I mean, I'm against most rock, I agree.
Well, I would also suggest, Mr. Kennedy, that we prepare for the next meeting to be grass first reading. A continuing resolution for the new year, in the event that the finance committee is unable to complete their deliberations on this budget. You know, time to pass was for the December nineteenth.
I'm just so understanding, you talk about it very much.
Correct. Because, um, I, I don't want to find ourselves in December nineteen, with only this agenda item, and if for some reason we won't pass it, we'll need to call a special meeting to have that, uh, continuing, uh, have a temporary, have a temporary appropriations budget. I'd rather make sure we had one of the other ready to go, well, have all ready to go and be able to take the be able to take one, as opposed to to not, try not to find ourselves in a budget. Yes, so we have a motion, I'm going to turn it to table. I don't see, question table item C, which is one of these twenty twenty-two dash sixty-nine, what do, uh, a lot of the finance committee to pass for association recommendation.
And that's there.
There, motion by Mr. Kane, you second, Mr. Rock, this is Thomas, did you get the, uh, the details on the motion? Very good, when you're ready, this is Thomas, follow along.
Um, Mr. Sir, I think just a discussion on that. I'm just going to go. Um, ordinance twenty twenty-two sixty-nine attaches to the initially proposed budget by the administration as attachment A. If there are substantial changes needed at attachments by the finance committee, how does that affect all the readings of the usual?
So you would undertake a, a motion to amend. Um, and depending on how substantial, um, the amendments are, um, we typically would have that excerpted, we sort of recommend that you consider that as though it's a first reading.
So the, the meaning, if they were substantial, not to be subsequent, trying to, I think, there'd be twelve potential changes, or should, you know, this would be something that would be, it wouldn't be the house. Secondly, they're reading.
It would be as though it was on first reading, and we recommend that if you were to adopt, um, that you would suspend the rules and adopt, or you could simply, um, have it read as amended, and be considered as first reading on, on second reading, or next meeting.
And as a procedural matter, this was returned from table as it is the current attachment. There were substantial amendments that were made, therefore the attachment was replaced by the attachment approved by the finance committee. Um, wouldn't be able to amend from the floor the agenda item so as to suspend the rule and pass that budget.
Correct.
I, I mean, this, so we wouldn't be placing all on as, as an emergency approval prior to the grant of the budget.
That's correct, thank you. Um, or, Mrs. Thomas, you ready to hold on?
Mrs. Sacks, aye. Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Will.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
A very good motion, he carries and the items tabled. Next is item D, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash seventy-two, authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to hundreds of C I C fund eight hundred and declaring an emergency. This legislation is sponsored by Life Security, so we can ask if there's anybody here who wants to present on this for those ordinance.
Perfect. All right, thank you. Um, in reviewing the, uh, funding for the C I C, uh, I believe, I spoke with Mr. Kennedy uh, to review whether or not the transfer of funds to the C I C have yet to be made this year, I do not believe that it had. I would require this motion in order to achieve that transfer, which was previously contemplated by that budget. When I say that, Mr. Kennedy?
Uh, yes, with one caveat, that the original budget contained provision for a transfer of twenty-five thousand dollars. Council, I will improve the transfer of eight thousand six hundred something dollars uh, to fund the survey, so it's early to record it. So the sixteen thousand dollar amount is the balance of that twenty-five thousand dollars change. Thank you for the clarification.
Is there any discussion on this? And, yes, Mr. Kane.
I don't know if anyone in this room knows what, what those bonds will be used for.
I know, I don't, Mr. Kane, maybe somebody else does. Mr. Kane.
Uh, that's, Mr. Kane, that's really a good discretion of the board of the C I C board. Um, they would vote, um, those both included in their budget, which council approves them to expect that money for this, that the board can, can have discussion. I have a lot of work in my mind.
Okay, Mr. Kane, is that, Mr. Kane?
Um, sure, and do you know the, Mr. Kennedy, do you know the current balance of the, the C I C bonds?
Or?
Good question. Um, the current balance is approximately fifty-six thousand dollars. Cash in bond balance.
Yeah, Mr. Kane, are there any outstanding liabilities that are required above the C I C for, to put this on?
Uh, I believe the only outstanding liability we have now is improved in purchase order or legal purposes, so not over any bills that are in process, but that's the only that has been provided for, they're reviewed here, and so pretty nominal amount, but the bill is contributing to the balance.
Do the current funds that are available in the C I C account would, would be on a cover of the current, that legal bill?
Yes, the purchase order is about three hundred ninety dollars, that's open, that's in the event of, we get a bill. And then we do have fifty-six thousand dollars of cash in bond balance.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kane, we, there were questions, discussion?
Mayor, just more of a comment, um, I believe since the formation of the C I C, the city council has approved a transfer of twenty-five thousand C I C annually. So this is just the number of annual, uh, transfer, and then in the twenty twenty-three budget, this budget is going to transfer again every twenty-five thousand. So this is, uh, formal business practice for us, it's just the annual transfer, and I have a share.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rock. Mayor, yes, Mr. Kane, and also, um, one of the issues that is arising in the vision to be current goal and expenditure is that Mr. McConville has provided his notice to the C I C, his intention to withdraw as council for the C I C. Uh, the C I C is then, has been placed in a position to require, uh, retain its own council. So there are anticipated addition of the votes, uh, to review several matters. Uh, we intend to review the laws of the C I C and their business intention for ordination. Uh, and so for all the reasons, uh, transferring, we cannot approve. Uh, Mr. McConville has provided to the C I C most of the names of individuals who, uh, may be appropriate to fill that position. Should a, be so in other cases.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Kane. We have a C I C meeting on November nine. And as I stated at that meeting, the administration will not support any further transfer of resources, no money, no real, no real property to the C I C unless or until we agree an incremental restructuring of the organization. And will not offer asserted funds to be transferred to the C I C at this time. If the board will not work together to make changes, then the C I C may simply weather on the line with no other dollars transferred to it. C I C may spend out what it has and go going. Or we can restructure and then work together again on real estate transactions, as we originally intended and stated on the public record when we created the C I C. More optimistically, I believe the fifty-six thousand dollars aren't kind of sufficient to effectuate a restructuring. If a restructuring is going to happen. But put another way, if this legislation passes this evening, I will need to. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Several.
There is a motion to approve, uh, ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash seventy-two, is out, where it is.
Yes, on emergency.
On emergency, you buy Mr. Rock, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Mrs. Sacks. Any discussion? We'll take two votes, Mr. Thomas, would you please take role first, colonies, professional rule?
Mrs. Sacks, aye. Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Will.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
And okay, and then, that's not a passage, uh, where it's, are being supposed to be suspended because we're in twenty-five, so the ordinance will run second.
And we draw that, we said that they're not doing emergency.
Well, no, because we have to do on emergency to pass without being in twice. Uh, actually, if you pass on emergency at the next meeting. You can pass it on emergency at the next meeting, or you can pass it or you, yeah, maybe, yes. Or if, or you can amend. Or if, or you can amend to remove the emergency clause in passing the second meeting and we'll come back in thirty days.
Uh, for the ourselves.
Or because you're not making the three, the two meeting rule, won't you make the two?
Just the effect.
Or there's another alternative, Mr. Kane, to change both and if you're on emergency. But you could, you could ask for reconsideration, well, I guess he goes in the desk.
Okay.
Alright, so the, the vote fails. The vote on suspension failed and then your motion is second meeting and next meeting. Right back. Yeah. If the law or indicated the, the vote suspending rules fails and ordinance twenty-two-two dash seventy-two will cross second meeting at the next. Regular policy. Next is item E resolution twenty-two-two dash seventy-three. Uh, in support of an application for a grant from Northeast Ohio Regional Seward District Community Cost Care Program for a stormwater management and relief sewer project at the intersection of East Scarborough and Canterbury Roads. This is on emergency, this is a change. Yes, thank you, Mayor, um, the next two items, item E and F are together. Uh, it involves the center relief sewer to be put in uh from the intersection of East Scarborough, Canterbury down to Meadowbrook. Uh, I was at this, at council here a couple meetings ago and we received a grant for fifty percent of this project from this Northeast Ohio Regional Seward District. Uh, I informed council that I would be then asking the Seward District if we could use our community cost sharing dollars, putting up a fifty percent of this project and they have agreed to that. And that's what this is here, there's an agreement, it has to be signed by the mayor and by council, with the Seward District for the other fifty percent. Approximately eighty-six thousand dollars, the entire project is a win seventy-three uh and change, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I think you have it in the packet. Uh, I highly recommend we approve it this time. And every hundred percent fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney.
Mr. Rock, I have a few questions, um, I guess my first question is why do we have two agenda items for the same thing? What's supposed to go with this thing? But we're going to review this agenda item versus what are that? Which is the motive to, I'm sorry, vote to enter into an agreement with any R S D for the community cost care agreement?
It's just a procedural thing, I think, which is what they require. And we talked about this a little bit in our staff meeting story, it's really a bit of a distraction. You could simply move on to our, our, um, where to present, what agenda to tell those in two items, they are costly to approve the grant application along with the contract.
So, okay, thank you for clarifying that. Um, would entering into an agreement, I know I'm talking about, I don't know that on that agenda, or would entering into an agreement require us to do the project if we don't get the grant?
Agreement is for the grant.
I understand, but if we don't get the grant, are you still in agreement with any R S D to do the uh Scarborough, Canterbury project at fifty percent plus our fifty percent?
Yes. We are decided in agreement with that. Uh, we. I, I think the answer to your question is no, we, we, the, what the agreement says is that we go get the grant and, and having the on-line go to the project, that's what is countable during the agreement. If they don't pass this, we still have fifty percent of the funds. Correct. Which we've already agreed to, if we're going to build the project, we wouldn't put fifty percent of our own dollars in there versus taking these cost sharing dollars from the.
Okay, so we're not approving work to do this newer project until we know we have any grant dollars that we have, correct?
We haven't started.
That would be a question, right, that we understand for this year, so that's for next year's consideration.
Correct, for twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, so when the actual work happens, we don't have the grant, this is the second half of the grant. We could still uh push the project off, correct? Or does this put us in a bind in which we're entering into an agreement to work?
I think we committed to the project because we already accepted fifty percent of the money. I think we committed to it with our own conscience, and I went and got another fifty percent, so we didn't have to use our own conscience. I understand the question.
The reason I'm asking is when we did our budget for this year, we were told it's a hundred percent paid for by other entities, this would not come out of our pocket. So if fifty percent is coming out of our pocket, um, you know, why would that budget I have? That's under the impression that this is no cost to the city.
If, Mr. Chaney, is it under the circumstances under which we can get fifty percent of the, we need to receive the project?
No, this, this, we have it, we just have to send the agreement.
Exactly, right, right. What you're describing, Mr. Rock, is that they can't.
Well, okay, I don't need that to, I'm asking because I want to be sure. See, did you read the packet?
Let me say this.
Excuse me. We got the same debt.
Yeah. This, this, we're not, okay, that's wrong. If, if we don't need, if we not have cost sharing plans.
Correct.
We would be obligated to come back and see council approval um on the allocation of the balance. But it is just.
So that was my question, that answered my question, thank you, Mr. Conville, for, you know, more patience, so, okay. That was question number one. Um. Okay, so this is for grant for the community cost care program. It's the other fifty percent. What was it, eighty, two thousand?
Fifty percent fifty percent was an M C I P grant.
Yes.
This is the community cost sharing dollar, two thousand dollars.
Okay, so if it's awarded and we get the full grant, then one hundred percent of the project costs cover, correct?
Correct, other than construction inspection, as we talked about, the budget and finance, that was not, how much was that? Seventy-five hundred dollars.
Seventy-five, I think we put that, okay. Um, so it covers all the design engineering piece and not the construction inspection?
That's correct.
And do they have any particular rules, construction inspection?
They do that.
Okay.
It's up to locals.
Up to the local, yeah, okay, thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Chaney? Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-two dash seventy-three on emergency? So. Okay, motion by Mr. Cooney, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Parker. On here. Is there any discussion? If not, Mrs. Thomas, we call the world first and suspension of rules.
Mrs. Sax, aye. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Blue?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
And then on the main motion.
Mrs. Sax, aye. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Blue?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
And motion carries. May I, okay, the next item, I mean, you tabled it under your report. You tabled, you still. Oh, I'm sure, right, and that's, I mean, it's very custom to you, sure. Uh, item F is motion to enter into agreement with any R S D for community cost share agreement between any R S D and University Heights for the Scarborough and Canterbury relief sewer project. Joe, you give me that. It's a.
Nothing to ask her.
Okay, is there a motion to uh interview?
I have one question.
Mr. Rock.
So on your packet here, you listed a probable construction cost, one hundred forty-eight thousand nine oh three, so this is not that bid yet. Um. How will that work if the cost does not align with the probable construction cost?
Correct, but in design, yes, that's just a planning number and you have to come back to council.
Is it, is it back to council?
Fully designed.
But you're going to come back for the bid for rest, and then once you open the bid, you'll come back and then we can answer it one way, okay, thank you.
Very good, any further discussion on that? Is there a motion? So. Motion by Mr. Cooney, is there a second? Second, second by Mr. Rock. There is going. Mrs. Thomas, you hold on.
Mrs. Sax, aye. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Blue?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Um. And motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Chaney. I was going to make a comment, Chief. Yeah, we choose table. And uh, I just wanted to mention that uh the reason, the, the table that they asked the mayor to table is uh it's the same thing, we already have an agreement with the Seward District for the funds for this project. But when we did it, it wasn't not funded. But we went back to the Seward District and asking for more, so there's an amendment to the agreement we already had with the Seward District. That has to be passed before we can award the contract to the rest of them. I'll bring both of those back by this meeting, uh, again, the amendment first, which accepts more money from that same topic, we caution dollars. And then we can award the contract to the rest of them, which we have to fund. Very good, thank you, very nice statement. Next is item H, a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing legal proceedings personnel in the state house. Uh, the administration does have one personnel matter that we should follow up with council above. And thus we would ask for a motion and conclusion of mayor's portion of the whole executive session, well, have a motion. Have the executive session conclusion, mayor's portion, maybe for that discussion. Is there a motion? So. Motion by Mr. Blue, is there a second, second, second by Mr. Kane. Mrs. Thomas, you hold on.
Mrs. Sax, aye. Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Blue?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Um.
And motion carries, the one that is actually said we shouldn't take very long. And the mayor's portion of meeting, we now turn to reports and communications from the directors of departments, finance and other departments, and we'll start with finance, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor, two quick things, um, and following up on the list that I compiled, looking at all of finance completely, so sure, if you can.
Yeah, I'll get you that, that's big.
I just want to make sure that, that mine isn't simple years, but I get about a half of that list already. Okay. Answered. And then I'll be meeting with our auditors next week to go over some issues uh prior to the end of the year that have been set for the audit. That audit will start, you know, chain of learning. It's. It'll assume.
Very, very good, thank you, Mr. Kennedy, any questions since you can? Seeing um during their laws, we come, no reporting, thank you, Mr. Conville, public safety, please, chief of ethics, next to use this meeting. Public safety fire chief, or, you'll report tonight, no reports tonight at service, Mr. Cor. We're going to get a lead update.
Yes, an update on our lead collection that is correctly completed two rounds, we're halfway through our third round of the city. And uh, as soon as the snow melts, we'll get that going again, today was a day we took a break. Uh, second item is tree planting, we completed the tree planting project. And the next uh tree pruning and removal project will begin in December.
Very good, exactly, some of those trees on Wishell have had on rising the phone levels.
Uh, it does, that will be in the removal project.
Yes.
Yes.
Very. Any questions to Mr. Cor, Mrs. Sax?
Thank you. Um, I understand there are signs, ten thousand signs that are posted where the um, the streets where the wreaths are collected, and there's no parking during that time.
We, we have done that on several streets where we have parking issues, yes.
Okay, some are filled with parking issues, if you would please post that, and that's pending in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mrs. Sax, any other questions for Mr. Cor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rock. Uh, Mr. Cor, I just wanted to follow up, um, to my report that was a citizen that brought a city unloved to our attention. I wish there was a dead tree, apparently, uh, has the service department any evaluation of that tree to determine whether it will be appropriate to put on a future removal list or if it needs emergency removal?
It does not need to look for emergency removal and it will be done with our regular removal this, this year.
So I know sometimes you can be next to something like that, the, the question is saying that we're looked at it to know whether it's fall, fall, or spring. We've gone out, we've looked at it, it doesn't need to be taken down immediately, uh, but will we on the future?
That is correct, that's, that's the other part of that email was uh, well, we leave dock of that lap, which we did do. Awesome, thanks so much.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Blue, thank you, Mr. Cor, any other questions for Mr. Cor? Thank you, Mr. Cor. Next is uh housing and community development, Mr. Engelbrand.
Sure, I have no recording this time.
No report this evening, very good, thank you, Mr. Engelbrand, accident city engineer, Mr. Chaney, no report, no report, thank you, Mr. Chaney. Accidents communications, civic engagement, Mr. Cook.
No report, mayor, ask your kind of to explain what I would have given in a report in your report.
Yeah, I took all your fire there, no, thank you for letting me do that.
Thank you.
And showcasing it up front, but as you said, I took your report. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Uh, I come to call, Mrs. Drucker is, uh, has been excused from this meeting this evening, there is no report. We now turn to reports to standing committees and thank you for action there on building and housing, Mrs. Blinfield. I was excused from this evening's meeting, is anybody in the committee that will report? Not, there is no report, and we'll move to community outreach, Mr. Kane? No report, no report, thank you, Mr. Kane, I can't talk to all of them, Mr. Rock?
Hi, yes, Mayor, we will have our meetings start up in January for the zoning review. Um, I thought I had a date, don't, so I will follow up with your activity on that.
Yeah, so I think I might have that due.
That's the most I can say, it's all.
I think it's Wednesday, January twenty-fifth at six P M.
Um, I don't want to confirm, so, okay, I'll get back to you.
There, there is time for January, we'll do that, so, okay, well, thank you, Mr. Rock. My finance, Mrs. White is absent and excused from this evening's meeting, anybody in the finance committee, you're a big report.
Yes, so, Mr. Rock. Finance and finance advisory committee, we have the first meeting in regard to draft budget. And we anticipate final meeting in the next two weeks. Um, I believe the date for people now.
Uh, we will, January eighth. December eighth. I think it's December. Uh, Thursday?
Yeah, that's correct, so December eighth at six o'clock, so, um, we had our first meeting last week, there was a few items we needed additional information from. Um, and we'll go over to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rock, recreation, Mr. Chaney, Laura Parker, thank you, Mr. Chaney, safety, Mr. Blue. Laura Parker, thank you, Mr. Blue, service utilities, Mrs. Sax.
Thank you, um, the next service utilities community meeting, I just want to confirm this thing, what was asked me, is January fourth at six P M. Um, and since this was mentioned in the council of the whole or the service directors report, I believe tomorrow uh at four P M, we have a site visit at the Shaker Hyatt Service Yard.
That's great.
Um, to view, uh, the new year's service, um, that's last of our facilities assessment related trips at this point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Sax. Now, I'm going to committee the whole, Mrs. White's again, is uh excused, is there a report of the community?
Yes, Mayor, um, last week, the committee of the whole joint facilities committee had met at the Solent Service Yard and go into the review of their facilities and as the Sax, our general viewer, last uh tour at Shaker. Is that?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Be there.
I'll be there. That's, that's the end of the committee of all of our.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mr. Rock. Uh, that includes the, well, actually, that's. Out there. Yes, thank you, are there any reports of special committees for taking action there on? Is there any finisher in this one, is business? And if there is none, then we will proceed to our executive session, I do not anticipate any further visits on the record, you know, the mission will turn after including our executive sessions, so, uh, all the folks who wanted to stay, I don't think there's anything missing if you leave, so, thank you. Our next uh regular meeting uh will be uh in December. Uh, that will be uh Monday, December fifth at seven P M here at Aurora High School. So we now um convene a dinner with the executive session, the rest of you, thank you. Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome.
You should pay pretty bad.
No, that's easier. That's not, I remember that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. This one, yeah.
Um.
Um, very, I, I, it's going to be a semi healthy. Um, you know, who do you want to be done with that? Not you, the whole, should. It's been us, I'm putting on that. Or. Um, I don't know, the town, it's, but, um, everything. So, um. Yes, it's, and Josh, for, uh. The one, it's this one, this one, so one, this one.
You know, that's the way you, uh, this should be, I think, then.
Okay.
Have, in that, have you?
Okay, yes, man, see you, you were. But here.
That was sound.
Four one. Which is perfect, because I was gonna ask twelve years.
Uh, you know what? That's why I, 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 I. So I have to worry.
Not.
Not this side of the world.
Well, very good. Maybe not. They're like. You're doing. Is there a motion to return or end the session? The answer to that is seven, and Mr. Bo has moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Zett, once you call.
Zett, aye, Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Bo.
Aye.
Mr. Penny.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye, motion to return.
Welcome to the room, Mr. King, is there a second? Once you call.
Mrs. Zett, aye. Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Bo.
Aye.
Mr. Penny.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Who was that, John?
I was. And it's eight twenty-four P M, and we are. I'm very excited for that.